Unmute. I am going to call the meeting to all rise for a pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance. Welcome, everyone. It will be summer eventually, I am sure, right?
Wednesday.
Wednesday is summer, huh? For a day and then it gets cold again. So, I guess this beats the alternative. The very first item on the agenda is special business. It's reappointment of, these are all to the plan commission. Reappointment of Magdalena Devorek to the PCZBA. Appointment of Derek Spikowski to the PCZBA as a commissioner, from secretary. An appointment of David Perry as the PCZBA secretary. I know I sent a blind copy, an email to everyone requesting your support of my appointments. Any discussion unless somebody wants to make an appointment or make a motion to approve?
So moved.
Okay, moved by trustee Tenucci, seconded by trustee O'Connor. That is a voice vote, right? All in favor? Roll call.
Roll call.
Yeah, roll call.
Trustee Tenucci.
Aye.
Trustee O'Connor.
Aye.
Trustee Spikowski.
I'm not eligible.
I'm sorry, trustee Harris.
Aye.
And then, does Bill need?
Yeah, I need to vote.
And President Jacob.
Aye. Okay, motion carried. Okay, now, something that I enjoy doing and it's recognizing people for their years of service. And you know, I was, I was looking at this, this is, this is the recognition of Margarita Romanella for 23 years of service for the Village of Long Grove. Now, I am not sure if you were the longest employee or not to serve the village. That's one, a set of records we don't have. Caldote may have been, I don't know. So, we'll, we'll figure that out eventually. But I did kinda look through a few things. For example, you've supported or worked with four village presidents, including me. That would be Tony Dean, Maria Rodriguez, who's no longer with us, Angie Underwood, and myself. And then the number of village managers gets interesting. It gets really interesting because you got Dave Ledspike for quite a while, right? And then...
There was actually somebody before him that was in interim for a short time.
Short time, yeah. But, but basically, did you work when that interim was in place? Did you work for the interim?
Yes.
Oh, you did, okay. And then you have Bill Balling, Greg Jackson, Art Austin, and then Chris Sparkman. That's quite a few village managers that you had to support. So, congrats there. So, I, we, a resolution was put together and I'm gonna read it out loud. And then after we vote on it, I would like to have you up here for pictures, if we can, right? And maybe a couple different pictures. Our photographers over there, so George Jaeger, who always takes pictures, and maybe somebody else will as well, right? But anyway, so, resolution recognizing Margarita Romanella for 23 years of dedicated service to the Village of Long Grove. Whereas, Margarita Romanella, Margarita, has faithfully served the Village of Long Grove in various building department roles since 2002. Whereas, for 23 years, Margarita has been a key part of the village team, bringing a wealth of institutional knowledge and attention to detail and professionalism to her work. And whereas during her tenure, the village, with the village, Margarita has assisted with the day-to-day operations of the village department, serving as a vital liaison to residents, contractors, and other agencies, helping guide hundreds of projects, yes, hundreds or more, through the preliminary process. And whereas Margarita's knowledge of the village codes and procedures, as well as her dedication to public service, has ensured consistent and reliable support for the village operations and customer service. And whereas her steady presence, reliability, and commitment have positively impacted the village staff and community for more than two decades. And whereas while Margarita has chosen to retire, she leaves the village a stronger organization because of her service and sets a high standard for public sector professionalism. And whereas the village president, president and the board of trustees finds it fitting and proper to express their sincere appreciation to Margarita for her exceptional service to the Village of Long Grove. Now therefore, be it resolved by the president and board of trustees of the Village of Long Grove in the County of Lake, State of Illinois, as follows. The foregoing resettles are incorporated into and made part of this resolution. The president and board of trustees, Village of Long Grove hereby express their appreciation. On behalf of the village, its residents, village staff, and Margarita, for her many years of devoted service, and extend their warmest wishes for a happy and fulfilling retirement. This resident, resolution shall be in full force and effective upon its passage and approval today in a manner provided by law. Congratulations and thank you. We're gonna miss you.
Thank you.
Come on up here. We got our photographer there. I so appreciate you doing that. You wanna, first off, congratulations.
Thank you.
We're gonna miss you.
Thank you very much.
How do we do this? What's a good way to do it? He smiles. Do you wanna get one with your family too? Is that the family photo? Would that be awesome?
Sure.
You want to help?
It'd be awesome. Will you hold your number two? Here's my three.
Yeah, now we're hiding behind them. Does anyone else wanna get up here too?
Yeah.
There we go. Does that work? They don't make any noise. There's a, you know, light bulbs flashing and everything. Nothing like that anymore? All right, there you go.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
You're gonna be missed.
Thank you, Margarita.
I appreciate it. Thank you, everyone, for all your, for your recognition and your support.
Yeah, she's already gone, yeah. Yeah, we got, we got a vote on it.
Oh, okay, so, all right. Adam, you make a motion. Somebody wanna make a motion to approve?
So moved.
So, all right, automated. All right, all right. By trustee Adam and seconded by trustee O'Connor, or trustee Harrison, seconded by trustee O'Connor. All, what?
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carried, thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you. All right. A package was left at my front door, okay. See those messages? Do you get those too?
All the time.
Yeah. You don't have the, the doorbell cameras where they send you messages when a package is left?
I get it through.
Oh, okay. Mine, that's on my watch, so. Okay, so, um, we have, the next item on the agenda is homeowners association. I don't see Jay Griffiths here, from Country Club of States, right? Now, you did get some feedback about the grass in the Grove being, certain spots being overgrown. And so, you'll probably have somebody go out and inspect it. And then, thank goodness, if you're gonna watch the replay, Jay, don't yell at me. But I didn't get any early morning calls or text messages for the yard, the landscapers from the Grove tend to violate the seven o'clock curfew. And every time they do, I get a text message from Jay, so.
I'm surprised that he isn't here because in April, he asked me to try to help them get a sign back that used to be at the entrance to Country Club of States office, Schaefer, that there is no street parking. He said it was there for years and it disappeared and they, they were wondering if it could be replaced. And there's a residence regarding the landscaping, a residence that I reported on Potawatomi, where the Grove and trimming all their, you know, trimming trees and bushes and stuff along the, along the backyards of Potawatomi. Anything that fell in the backyard is still there. This was done last fall. Everything they cut that was on their side, you know, it's all stacked up on Old McHenry, which is fine. They probably just forgot about it. They went home from work and came back three days later. But they could pay attention to that. Those homeowners would appreciate it.
Got it. Well, I'm gonna start by also, or end by saying, Jay, thank you for your service because he's been HOA president for quite some time now, so.
I'm surprised you didn't put that in this.
So, Jay, we appreciate you. And I also appreciate you being on the tip review board this year as well. So, Bill handle, I don't think Bill's here either. And so I guess we'll move to public comment. Anyone have public comment? Benjamin Matthews?
I'm Benjamin Matthews from 4359 Oakley Lane in the Village. My first question is, has there been any updates to the special lease application of 4359-22? But my other question is regarding the quick trip. When they first came before the village ward a while back, they said they were gonna extend the sidewalk from Buffalo Grove to Sunset Grove. And I was wondering if that's still on the table because I know that the O'Conners have been working on trying to get connectivity throughout the village. This might be a wonderful opportunity to get somebody else to work, something like that. If there's any other trails around there that maybe they could potentially link up to. And my final question about the picture, whatever you wanna call it, is that where the high floor, deep floor pumps were supposed to go, you know, there's nothing there right now. I remember trustee Jamil was mentioning that I really just didn't have a safe floor, cricket fields and stuff like that. I really didn't wanna donate that as a park or something. It's probably not gonna be too useful or available. Maybe if the votes were active with you guys, that's supposed to all happen with the Marius who's been shut out of a lot of things.
Thank you. You wanna address the questions in order, I guess?
Yes. Question one, no update yet. Question two, you are correct, there is a pathway in the preliminary plans that were approved from Sunset Grove down to the southern portion of their property. And the crosswalk that would be part of the improvement of the 8353 intersection. That would go in and connect to our pathway system right there in front of Seal. Third, it's, it looks like open space on the map, but it's really not. It's part of another parcel that would be part of the future development of the property. We asked, we asked about that, we had similar thoughts as you.
And that's all TBT though, right?
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, and it's, it's a, it's a great thought. I had it myself, actually. But when you, when you sit back and think about it, your cars, a lot of cars going to be driving out of there, it's probably not, if they call it an attractive new, you know, attracts kids, but it's not really a safe. I, I agree with you.
George?
Yeah, we can see any of the road improvements in that area. Because of the southbound traffic on Route 83 being so congested, at the time of all the construction, would there be consideration of a right turn lane going southbound and then westbound onto Robert Parker Coffin? Because there's so many people that turn right at that intersection going into town. Might help alleviate the big backup in that area. Because there's always a backup between Robert Parker Coffin Road going up to Apptekisic.
So, so where would the right turn lane be? I'm sorry.
On the southbound Route 83.
Southbound Route 83.
At Robert Parker Coffin.
Oh, an exit.
Or turn right into Robert Parker Coffin.
Interesting.
Help alleviate the backup and the congestion there.
Boy, if I were a neighbor there, I wouldn't be happy.
Yeah, wouldn't, wouldn't that just have, have backups on Robert Parker Coffin all the way through town?
No. I don't think so.
Yeah, that's an interesting idea.
But it, it, you need, need a place to put the cars because it's always congested and backed up. Just so you have another lane at the solution.
No, you said, you said going southbound.
Yeah, going southbound.
And, but you said at Robert Parker Coffin.
Are you backwards?
Going southbound, we come free.
Yes.
So you can turn onto Robert Parker Coffin.
Shouldn't it be coming up? Oh, it's backwards here, I see.
Yeah.
Right there.
Yeah.
Those houses there, that's the issue. You'd have to acquire property, right?
Yeah, we'd have to.
And the, and the storage school.
No, no right of way there, yeah.
There's no right of way there, so?
Yeah, it's, it's acquired property from the adjacent landlords and there's a lot of, a lot of action going on.
Well, that's our thing. All right, well. It's a good thought. I mean, so I come that way from Lincolnshire and I make the left and then I gotta wait like another light.
Right, I told you.
To make that right turn. So, I, I did it today, I, every, every week when I come here, I do that, right?
Yeah.
Same thing, so I got you now. Something to think about.
It's not gonna be a problem, you know, maybe it works, maybe it doesn't, like, the least awareness is there.
Yep.
And I've always thought about extending Apptekisic Grove west to Hidden Old McHenry Road. Half the county knew that as a road improvement project for the benefit of everybody.
Got it.
Does that go through the golf course then?
No, it doesn't. It's adjacent to it. I don't know if there's a right of way, but it's right adjacent. So, I mean, it's, it's something to explore.
Right. Okay.
Might be a pathway too.
It could be a pathway, there you go. It's all about pathways.
If, if we could, through Apptekisic and that's what, three lakes, between three lakes and?
Mm-hmm.
And?
The golf course.
The single, the?
Golf course, and then you have, what, out to Cuba or something?
Yep.
Yeah.
I think that's where it, where it hits over to the road somewhere in that area.
So we'd have a new cut through.
I don't exactly how you could flow, but just another idea.
Yep. Often thought about that, then you have the cut through, so that gets interesting, but. All right, thanks for those thoughts. Thank you. Appreciate it. Any other comments tonight? Benjamin, did we answer your questions?
Yes.
Okay, cool. And then, let's move on to the, there is no public safety report tonight, right? You're not gonna give it, are you?
No.
Okay, checking. Let's move to the consent agenda. There are just two items on it. Approval of the 2025, May 2025 bill warrant and then approval of the regular board meeting minutes from the May 27th meeting, subject to non-sustantative revisions. Anyone wanna make a motion to approve? Motion made by trustee O'Connor, seconded by trustee Jamil. Roll call, please.
Trustee O'Connor?
Aye.
Trustee Tenucci, oh, sorry, Jamil?
Aye.
Trustee Harris?
Aye.
And trustee Tenucci?
Aye.
Motion carried. All right, always an exciting thing that we talk about, the village engineer's report.
All right.
There you go, Jeff.
No microphone today.
No microphone.
Well, that was really exciting.
Um, the engineers updated the report package, just a couple houses tonight. The village hall expansion next door is going quite well. The doors have been delivered and they're going to be installed this week. So, that's kind of the linchpin, as I mentioned, the last door leading to getting that space kinda tuned up and ready for staff to move over there, which I understand is going to be in mid-July. So, looking forward to that, returning that down. Number two, the 2025 road maintenance program, we're still working through the?
Can you stop there for a second, as long as we have a moment? So, and staff moves in there, then how do we handle village board meetings? Do we still do them here? How's that gonna work?
We'll be in the new room.
We'll be in the new one, yep. Okay. And then, this will be opened up for remodeling, but will be, the staff will have, like, temporarily work in the main boardroom?
It's gonna be interesting, yeah. We'll have probably one or two people in the conference room and someone in the boardroom. And then Dana and I will have our office spaces, so we gotta figure all that out.
Got it.
Because the custo, the residents will enter through the new doors there.
Right.
How we greet them and, you know.
Furniture come yet?
That's the holdup now. So, it'll be here the week before July 14th. So, we're tentatively scheduled for the install, the week of July 14th.
I think that's what she told us.
It's about, yeah. I was hoping they'd get the phase one, the new stuff in sooner, but.
Is there gonna be like a door here, like, this is gonna be the way you walk in?
Yeah, this will be blown out, window to window.
And will there be a door there? Where's, what's gonna stop people from walking back here from the, whatever it is, the corridor there in the middle as you?
Yeah, so the door will be, our offices are right here. We'll be right after our offices in the hall, in like the main corridor.
So you'll have to, like, lock your office when you go into a meeting, right? Otherwise, people could walk in that come into the village hall.
Yeah.
Will there be doorway paths? Paths are off towards here, there'll be a doorway.
Oh, okay, there will be. So there'll be two doorways, there'll be one here and then one?
Will there be a doorway right here?
There won't be one right here, but right past.
Right past.
Oh, right past, okay, got it. There'll be a doorway there, okay.
But we'll be open to the path.
Okay.
Those doors are gonna be closed during regular, once everything's done during the day. Because our main counter is still gonna be right here, entryway.
So we'll be, we'll be open to the rest of the path area, we'll be closed off to the door.
Okay. And when we move in, we probably won't, day one, we may not have all the audio visual equipment all ready?
That will be ready to go.
Oh, really, okay. Got it, and we'll be all mic'd up?
Yep.
That'll be interesting.
So, next meeting, July?
It's gonna be a short meeting tonight. Any chance we could take a little taxi after the meeting?
Yeah, we can walk you.
That sounds good. All right, keep going, because I'm like, I, my goal is not to keep this, you know, longer than a half hour. Not necessary, so.
All right, I'll do my part. The 2025 road program, we're working through the final approvals that I got. Still hoping that we get this in late June. Probably won't be come to before the board, so first meeting is in July. Dropping down, number 10, I put an update in here of the work on Checker Road. Do you know that's closed to traffic, to, what, eastbound traffic, I think, for most?
Uh, westbound.
Westbound traffic, yes. So, eastbound can go through. Anyway, they finished the work on the north side of that, so now that, eastbound traffic is on the south side of the road, but they are moving forward with that. So, just wanted to clarify that they're moving forward with that work at that intersection? But it is still closed and the detour is still in place. So, hopefully that gets done here probably by the end of the month, if we're looking right. And then just one quick update, dropping way down to number 17, the Deer Trail subdivision. The, gonna report that they're starting to work on the internal roadways in there. So, they're putting the gravel bays in there and pretty soon we're gonna see concrete curbs. Other than that, that's the updates I had. If there's any questions, happy to take those.
When are they gonna put the trail in?
When are they going to put the trail in?
In Deer Trail subdivision.
The trail in Deer Trail.
They have it marked off.
Yeah, they've got it staked, but we're seeing the action on it, yeah. So, I'll ask and?
Because there was discussion about that when, when McNuggets were here.
Something tied to like, you know, first buy houses or something like that, too, or? It went around and around, yeah. I'll get an update.
Thank you.
All right, any report?
Any report?
All right, time for the village president trustee reports. The only thing that I have, and I wanted to get feedback, is we wanna do a strategic planning workshop?
Yay.
Well overdue. I did want to have an outside facilitator possibly. Chris is researching that and we'll have to figure out a time. I don't know if, you know, trustee O'Reilly will be able to attend. We'll have to figure that out too and reach out to her. But is everyone agreeable to do that?
Yes.
Chris, you went off of mute, so.
Yes, yeah, that's a good idea.
So we need to do that. And then we also, we need to work on his goals for the coming year too, right? So, we're already in the coming year too, so that, I don't know which comes first, but they could be part and parcel a little bit, so.
The subject matter of the case, obviously.
Well, I think it's, it's getting all aligned on what our strategic initiative is going forward, right? There's a, this is for the next four years. What do we wanna accomplish?
Like a five-year plan?
Like, something like that, yeah, whatever, you know, take us out. And we haven't sat down and done it in a while. We've got many things in the works, but let's prioritize, right?
Sounds good to me.
Give, give everyone direction, so. Are you good with that, Adam?
I'm great with that, that's all I'm thinking.
All right, Kat, you good too?
Yep, sure.
All right, extra meal? Yep. All right, so we'll get, we'll get on that. That's all I have, and my report. Trustee Browski?
Nothing to report, thank you.
All right, trustee Harris?
No, I, nothing to report. I do have a question that was made a week before, made village staff. Didn't get any details on it. I'd like to know if it was limited to village staffers or village in general, anything. I was hoping that Lieutenant Kaiser would be here, but I was hoping that I'd like to find an update. Find out if there's any updates regarding, you know, the investigation.
Yeah, so there's a series of calls, all from the same person that came in. And they were less than, I'd say, 10 seconds each. Bulgar and just some threatening, some just being vulgar, just rude things. We asked Comcast for the, the records. I don't think we got, did we get anything back? So we're gonna have the sheriff subpoena the phone records and then see if we can trace it.
You know, I also got threatened back, I wanna say, was it November timeframe? And it was, you know, the quote-unquote, "You will never, if that quick trip passes, you'll never feel comfortable walking through the village again." Nice. And it said, "You unscrupulous piece of S H I T." So that was a nice way to start the?
That charm school.
Yeah, absolutely, so, yeah. Thanks for asking and it seems like the, like, the way the messaging was, it seemed connected.
Did they talk about any trustees in particular or just the staff?
Just staff.
It wasn't even to anyone personally, it was?
It was nothing to do with?
They were just leaving messages.
Like, bad, bad, bad idea, bad. And it was, it was weird. They didn't say target anyone, it just left messages, it's weird. Yeah. Um, anything else?
That's all.
All right, trustee Jamil?
No report.
Uh, trustee O'Connor?
No need for it.
Trustee Tenucci?
The Ginty finished their first round of teazle treatments. They sent an invoice for $8,100. We should've gotten that credit.
Yeah, we got the bank.
You did, okay, good.
Um, just as a reminder, we budgeted 14,9. The first round was 8,100. They feel the second round should be a lot less because it'll just be touch-ups and, you know, whatever they may have missed the first time. So, we expect to be within budget.
Where was it? Where, where were they able to treat the sheep?
I've got a map, I can send it to you. But generally, routes 53, 83, 22.
Wow.
County roads like Old McHenry and Diamond Lake and Apptekisic, as well as several village roads.
You got all that? That's terrific.
Basically same as last year, with the addition of Oakwood Road this year.
There's that whole, whole thicket of, of teazle on Schaefer. It's, when you're headed south on?
That sounds correct, probably.
Well, that's, that's really too bad because I frequently see someone out there cutting it.
Probably in August when it's going to seed, so they then spread it all over.
I'm sure, I'm sure the heart is in the right place.
Yeah.
And, you know, I, I don't, I don't think we could have a teazle party necessarily. I wonder if, and we've done it in the past where we have sent out notices and I just wonder if there's a, a short video that we could, could create showing somebody the proper way to do, you know, it doesn't have to be more than 60 seconds long, which is kinda long for a video. But, you know, that the prop, the proper way to get rid of it and when to do so might be helpful to a lot of people, but you just, I don't know. You know? You know, you know, Sunset spray silver on them, and December puts them in the pots, like, celebrating teazle here, you know, but, um-
The proper way is to mow it before it goes to seed, and then a month later, mow it again.